I thought the City Council meeting, David Lee, since October 17th, will rise by education and by Mr. Charles Slay on Riverwood and Dean's Streets, followed by our technical leaders, which will be led by our own member, Ottem Felicia Harris. Thank you.
Father, thank you for the leadership in our mayor, in our city commissioners, in our city manager, our city attorney, and the city clerk, Lord God, who will be a place of authority in the city of Brunswick. Thank you that you have the well-being and the quality of life of every citizen in Brunswick and Black County. Amen. Thank you that you're giving them a mouth and a voice and wisdom to govern this city, Lord God, so that we can all have a better life. Thank you for the wisdom you've given them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
We live in the United States of America and we are a republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you everybody for coming out this evening. We are just getting finished with our work session and excited enough very much about what's gonna happen on the Lower Street quarter. And it just solidifies the fact that we're doing things here in the city of Brunswick, which means that the city is doing a lot of things as well as things go. So I'm very excited about that. So let's just keep excited going through our City Council meeting this evening. And first item on our agenda is Urban Revolver, the agency chair, Mr. Aron Bennett, to give an update on items that you already...
...that we need to defer before we start the city's construction. I'll make a note that we defer our planning plan back to the approval of restriying number 21820, adoption of the comprehensive plan.
Second, thank you for the case. I apologize for not asking for any additions to our agenda, our current agenda. Then I'll leave motion second for to defer this item, item number five, our comprehensive plan. And I guess we'll leave it open until we be able to...
I did not get anything, sir.
Okay, well, we'll leave it open until the next, until the meeting that we put on, put it like that. Yes, one reason why, because we're still waiting approvals from State Department. So, any further comment? What's... If not, all of them, the first item, please take your right hand. How much you carry it, Adam? Thank you. Thank you for the case. I'll get it. I apologize for what I was asking for, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening to the members of the city commission. Okay. I'll start with Mayor Ross Park. Thanks for moving right along with Mayor Ross. As you're aware of, he celebrates southern preparations to provide the playground and splash pad equipment that we did give the boost everything times. All of that is in progress. And so that's moving right along. I told this to have park ready for fun and so forth by beginning of the year or estimating sometime around March, April, that time frame. So hopefully we'll have enhanced gym for the city of Brunswick. Now, we also have a handout of a draft layout of the park on the first page. Last time I was here, there's some questions as to locations of the splash pad and things like that, as well as order of two locations and so forth. And before we really get into the illustrations that we have, we're also working with Joint Order Sewer as well as Mr. Aberson on how to deal with the runoff. There's some concerns about how you wanna deal with the rainwater and that sort of thing. So Joint Order Sewer can't figure out a good charge for it. So they would not have been to the... There's this woman, Mr. Aberson advised us that they have some illustrations on water going into the storm system. So we're working on that. We do have some ways to deal with it. We're trying to find the most economical approach. All that is kind of built in our cost. We're still trying to save some funds. So we can get that worked out in a more traditional fashion, and we can save a little bit more revenue upon the dollars that has already been approved. Right now, we have a fault built into the price that we have. We have a fault underground that we will bring the water into the drainage system, and we can use the water either for sprinkling or something of that nature. But if we can get to a point of consensus between either Joint Order Sewer or Mr. Aberson, whatever, and we are working together on that. We just gotta find a way to, you know, reach total consensus on that. Then we could probably stay some issue with splash pads, and that's what we're trying to do. Now, on to the layout. I'll start with the cover sheet that you have. Now, to the right of the page, that's really the southern end of the park. The top of the page is the eastern side of the park. The bottom is the western side, and then to the left is the northern side of the park. So going from right to left, there was a question as to the location of the splash pad. All right, right now, that shows, be sure, this is from the right, which is gonna be the southern east corner of the property, boundary, moving to the north. So the splash pad is about 152 feet. And we can adjust that somewhat if necessary, but that's where we're planning down. And so from there to the extreme edge of the playground area, that's roughly somewhere around 120 feet or so there. Again, we can adjust that if necessary. Now, we went out to the Coast Fest weekend, and that park was some of the old noises there. Some people that was in charge were running down or whatever. That kind of explained to them some of the things that we were doing with the park. There was some concerns whether or not for changes to splash pad and whatever would interfere with Coast Fest. It won't. We kind of explained to them where it is, the size of that areas and what have you. And right now, it'll probably be an addition to really whatever we did at Mayor Ross Park. One of the things we really, one of the great pains to do is to try to create a layout where we won't impede any of the activities that's presently taking place at the park, whether it's new or on the coast of the fest, or the school of the year, or the fireworks and what have you. Nothing that we are doing here will prevent any of those things from taking place. Now, whether or not some things may be some adjustments, probably so. Because where you have a splash pad as playground area, my suggestion would be that we, and for the splash pad, we're gonna need to kind of order that area off. But I would suggest the same thing with the playground also. And on the layout, we should show that, that being assigned, because at Coast Fest, one of the larger tents that I have, I think it's about 40 by 60, 60 feet. We are preserving space there to that on the left side of the playground area, so that that tent will fit into that area. One of the things that we're talking about, they did also, historically, they would use cordless and what have you. They had some concerns with cordless, so one of the things they did this year at this park is that they had portable toilets. I think you probably use any sawdust. But it cost them, I think it was over $4,000, $4,500 for that day to have those toilets. Now, once we kind of get into this layout a bit, when we do the rework of the park, literally we would have the restroom facilities there, so literally it would save them money to have the event at Mayor Ross Park. And one of the things that Doug just kind of designed, some cute little, we'll call them family-friendly restrooms, brand that can be built really economically, and you can customize them or what have you. Kind of get into that a little bit, a little bit later. But I mainly wanted to let you know at this point that had the layout of the park, splash pad, playground, whatever, were not impeded, and that this park, the way that you see it laid out here, would accommodate if we lose 10, actually, it kind of just depend on how conventionally people are typing or what have you. Somewhere between 10, maybe as much as 15,000 people, whatever, in the lean areas there. And then you have other areas, again, people will be added and things like that. But you can easily accommodate 5, 10,000 people or so in that park without being too crowded and what have you. So if those Coast Fest or whatever, somewhere those numbers, it shouldn't be anything that we've done up to this point.
Did they have a piano or anything they had? No, I did not get it.
Well, I don't have, what I heard, that it might have been around 9,000 or so. Does that sound far right?
9,400.
9,400, certainly. Right? And if you notice that, if it was out there, you can see even with $9 people, how much, it wasn't crowded at all. Mayor Ross Park is a pretty good-sized park, and I don't know if you can look at it. However, when you look at the space that we're talking about, you're not gonna keep that.
Let me ask one more thing, brother. You say now that you think if it was splash pad, if in the 50s or out there, it's supposed to be, how about as it grows? And things get larger, then?
Yeah. You know, obviously, everything would have capacity. My thoughts are that literally just based on this layout and so forth, and really when you look at there, they were to be, they were listening to their capacity. I'm thinking we can accommodate 12,000 to 15,000 people in Mayor Ross Park even after this is done. Will things have to be done slightly different? Yes. And when I'm saying slightly different, for example, you look at the several tents that Coast Fest had there. I think the two largest ones was the 40 by 60s and what have you. Well, one tent, well, in that area is a place for all of those, but we showing this layout, we look for a few. So literally, there will be less, well, at least one less tent that they would have to have if they let the U-Lab set space, my guess is that they will. So to answer your question, there is room for growth. And so, but my guess would be that you're gonna probably begin to max the park out once you begin to push the 15,000 and above kind of thing. But it'll also depend on what type of event that's being held out there. Obviously, the more fixtures and things like that, or tents, whatever, that's gonna affect some things. But if you have something like a concert or what have you, you want to be able to get more people into the park.
I don't see restaurants. I don't see a place all over the restaurant.
Yes, so yes, there's a question. Unless it's a question I submit to the layout and looking through it.
I have one other question. I have not thought that as we talked about splash pad. How movable is the splash pad?
The splash pad is not designed to be relocated or what have you. So this is something I'll... Now, this is a fixed feature. The playground area technically is fixed, but it can be relocated if you like. If not, we're saying that the splash pad can't be relocated. It just mean that you would be literally starting over from scratch. It's a permanent feature. Okay? Any other question on that? Okay, when it comes to the layout, if you look at the shaded area, that's the park space. Part of what we're trying to do, you know, we, Architect Roger Steph, we did a concept layout that would kind of work with the toilet. It was a, it was a concept that was, uh, some kind of, what have you, so we're keeping all of those things and not a past period leaning this. And a part of what we're trying to do is trying to prioritize it, get as much as we can within this first phase, so we're trying to maximize dollars and what have you. There's certain things you want to try to accomplish in the first phase, but all possible. Obviously, the splash pad and playground area are two of those things. I'd also put an additional pavilion in the area. And if you look at the splash pad here, to the right of the splash pad, there's a little square. And there's a little pen that says new pavilion. That pavilion is slated to be somewhere around 24 by 50 feet. And so what will be what happens is that you can, you can obviously use it for a variety of things, but it does lend, lend that area to being able to, you know, exalt that splash pad playground area, especially against whatever they would be letting to do so. Again, that would be up to the commission. One of the other things that we would like to do is finish off the pavilion. And so we're doing the moving to convert that to a local information center. And I'm moving here on the park for the city of Brunswick, especially for the downtown area. One of the things we found out as to, if we've been kind of dealing with this, is that there are a lot of people that come to fund it from the water. And so when it comes to funding from the water or from anywhere else, then you would have a place where you can actually get some information on the city of Brunswick, some maps of the restaurants and so forth in the downtown area. There'd be, you can get that right at that location. Concerning the location for the restaurant in the lower right corner, there's a little dotted area, that's kind of in the southwest corner of the property. You see that little rose out there in the hardscaping? That's kind of the tip. There's a 100 foot by 100 foot area right in there that we are preserving for a riverfront restaurant. Again, that would be private dollars that will do that, that will be, that will want to preserve that space. There was a question on this kind of misrepresentation. There was a question about making water and sewer. Been in a lot of conversations with Joint Order Sewer. On Long Blossom Street, you have water and sewer, as well as inside the parking lot of the Mayor Ross Park. Just on the, basically, the east of the splash pad, there's a sewage line going through there. And then there's probably the drainage system through Tynecastle Park. And there are water meters all around the park. So water, water is a little, little problem. You don't want some people finding water. And that's what it's not. But basically, right in that little southwest corner is what we are preserving for a riverfront restaurant. And I would, I would like to have that in the first phase, but we're still working on some things. And we'll see what happens there. Did that answer your question, commission? Okay, so now, let me kind of pause right there just for a moment to have it in terms of the very last page. Okay, right to your right, you'll see three different layouts of some restaurant. One starts with one in the upper right side of the page. Now, we know that there are a lot of things changing in our, in our society and so forth. So one of the things that we are wanting to do is, actually, something that we wanted to do. We want to be able to build a restroom like, add a restroom that's going to be conducive to the architecture of the park. We want to make sure that we construct the restrooms that won't cost us arm and a leg and another cap and a towel. And so what we've done is kind of designed what really is kind of an eight-by-eight restroom. This restroom, we built very economically. We're still putting some prices together on some things. But I would say that definitely, that's, I'm gonna just give a slag and something that should probably do what I'm standing here for you. But my guess is that you will probably be talking about less than $20,000 to totally, to put one or two of these things in place. But that being aside, we got basically an eight-by-eight foot square. And then literally, you can, you build these separately, or combine them together, or, you know, boom in clusters or so forth. So the top, the top illustration shows just a single eight-by-eight unit. And each of each units will have a toilet, a urinal, a lavatory, as well as, as well as a changing table. So basically, it's all kind of a family-friendly restroom. So you can go in there, when you build it, you know, when you have dinner, not more than included there. You have two, you can put them side by side, again, you have two. And then I should, um, last, it shows a cluster of four. Any questions before now, if, when you say there's also... The illustrations are a help agency with that. It's just an example of some of the things you can, you can do separately. And you can, you can use a variety of roof designs, whatever. That illustration shows sort of a Dutch steel roof or whatever. But again, it will bring with the architecture of the park. So we're using the lap siding as you see in the park, the same kind of, and some of the, this doesn't show it. We're using the building and what have you, like you see in the park. So basically, everything would bend to the existing architecture of the park. You know, that being mine, if you could keep that number two illustration, one to two cluster, and the number three illustration, one to four cluster. Now, if you go back to the first page, off to the right, you can see the shading. And right below the new pavilion, you see another little structure there that's, that's laid out at an angle. One of the things we wanted to do is really remind, define entrance for the park. Without offense, I know there were getting cables on site, so the park was under the fence, but I didn't tell them that being aside, this is without offense. But there's a few things that we need at the park. We need to have an equipment room for the splash pad. In addition to that, we really do need some additional restroom at the splash pad. So what we're showing there is basically an equipment room and some restrooms, and a main entrance into the park. Now, if you would just, I hate to have you flipping on the tape, but turn to the very next page. And then going to the right, you see that layout to the right, that is that equipment room. That structure is roughly 60 by 100 for the equipment room. There's a roll-up door there, and basically, they call it a skid. All of the equipment and whatever, for the splash pad, they on the skid. And then this slide pin to that room, and then you can maintain it. There's distance around that to be able to maintain it and what have you. Okay? Now, to, in between that, and to the left, you see a part of restrooms there. And in between there is a space of about 25 feet. So literally, you would be able to enter the park by walking between those two areas into the park if you want to create the entrance. You could also, to the left of the restroom, literally kind of go around and enter the park in that, that area also. You have two restrooms, to right, up to a level of entrance if you're going straight again. And then on the backside, we have two additional restrooms. So you have four restrooms right at the, at the entrance to the park or whatever. And now, just to go back to the first page, then to the right of that, you will see that pavilion. Okay, any questions? If you want to continue. I haven't come to the whole section.
So those, these are already included in the cost that we previously discussed? The, the, the equipment room has these restrooms?
No, the equipment, the equipment is, we, we have to, the restrooms and the structures, whatever, has on us to construct them.
Okay, but the equipment room is included?
The equipment in the equipment room is included.
But not the, but not the equipment, not the structure itself?
Not the structure. Yeah, they're provided, you just put, you pay for them, providing all that equipment and everything that runs with splash pad and what have you. You bring water to the structure. Basically, you bring water into the equipment room, and then they're pretty much updated and there.
Okay.
Okay?
That kind of drew you off of your, your last response.
All right.
Okay. Equipment room is the structure itself included in the cost that we've already discussed?
Okay, the Great Southern, the equipment that is, that will be located within the equipment room, Great Southern, that's within the price of that Great Southern that's given us. Now, the structure to place the equipment in, we are constructing that. And we would do that within the dollars that we have for Mayor Ross Park. And basically, what, what my thoughts are, and the reason we're locating the restrooms there, and then you would have us, if you can kind of imagine condensed view of the, of the farm market, basically, a structure similar to that, you would, you would basically equip over that area in order to create the entrance and what have you. And then we'll basically construct the restrooms and the, and the equipment room for the equipment right at that area.
Creating the entrance. So in guessing, my, the answer to my question is no.
About the equipment room?
Yes. I'm not asking you about the equipment.
Okay.
I'm asking about the storing of, the storage facility, building itself, the structure itself.
That is not including the Great Southern's price.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's, that's the answer to my question.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay. Now, the shaded area of hardscaping around it is, is kind of, is kind of illustrated, but basically, it basically creates some arches, so you don't, you necessarily walk on grass. It doesn't necessarily impede someone putting a tent or anything like that in that area. Actually, to some extent, depend on what you want to do, it may add some advantages in that because obviously, at the coast of being on, on terra firma, on dirt, you can have something a little more substantial there in order to walk, walk on. And in the middle, kind of, you see a bushed out area. That's an area that, that we just kind of, kind of put there so you can have some additional seating so someone wanted to just kind of sit. And that's a good place for covered, covered space, whether for some of the shaving or what have you. And then if you look right to the right there, you see a cluster of restrooms. There, I'm just creating a location for one of the double, you know, two restrooms right in that, that little area. So the two of those little, little cubicles. And then further on, then you see that little area there showing the large climbing hall there. Should this be, you know... Just one other, a quick thing before we finish this, is that up to the top of the page to the left, right next to the, to the native garden, there's a, there's a center outlet. If you go to exist, if you go to Mayor Ross Park now, when you exit in the parking lot, walking into that section of the park, there's a little center landscape on planting area there. Those little, two little little restrooms will sit right in front of that little plant there. So one of the things I thought would be good is to have some, some restrooms right at that, right at that area. That's the area where, you know, the native garden are. There's a lot of activities right up in that, that little space. So we're having a couple of small restrooms in there, I think, will serve the park well. Right now, the only restroom we have is, is at the northwest portion of the park behind everything. We're just kind of getting lost in all of the activities. But just to make that, yeah, a whole lot more function.
Okay, wait, let me, I'm sorry. I need to, I have this question. Is this included in the cost that we've already, we... Is this restroom there?
There are no restrooms.
None of the restrooms?
There are no restrooms, no structures at all, included in the cost of splash pad and playground.
Okay, so we, so we, so we're going to get some additional information for the finance committee to review for these additional costs?
Correct. And all this will be a part of this cost funding at Mayor Ross, what Mayor Ross put in. And basically, everything that we do is going to be within, right now, within the funds we have for Mayor Ross Park. So some of this hardscaping may not be done. You know, it's possible that other will be done, whatever. But then that kind of give us something to work and work again. That's it with Mayor Ross Park on this one kind of question. That's it with Miralos Park on this one, kind of question.
You know, almost like about the restroom, we're looking for a restroom right now, under the bridge and, and over the wall. So I'm wondering how those who play in would be. If you say you have those all the restroom, uh, we need to sort of get our heads together and, uh,
Are these, up down, or are these hooked up to?
No, but it's a golden way. But these are, we're looking at these, they're super available all kinds of areas. We're looking to, uh, grab it through the, into the sewer. Now, I did talk with Mr. Arrison, uh, concerning that. Uh, and he did show me what, what, uh, what he was pricing at the time. Uh, and he did share with me some of the costs of that. And I, I did share with him that I thought we could, uh, construct it for less than that, using, and basically, one of the same, we're looking to, to build both folks and things like that in there. And one of the great things about this, if you wanted to assume that, if, uh, whether the, uh, uh, the, uh, folks that, uh, take off some time or save us that, you know, we got a lot of flexibility in this. Uh, so to answer your question, uh, I have talked with Mr. Arrison, and once we can construct one, and once we, and within another couple of weeks, we'll have a part cost, uh, together. And I will work with, uh, uh, Carol, and yes, that's an option for us. If I may say, that's one of the reasons we're designing it that way, so they can be built economically, which is a world of flexibility. Okay.
Go ahead.
Anything else in Miralos Park? Now, did this shit take long? Alright, uh, we also had a last, we already approved our C M R, our contract construction manager at risk. We selected for this construction, there were, there were four responses. Uh, one from, uh, Pinion Company, one from Elkens, and one from Knight, as well as the Von Group. The Von Group submitted, submitted a, uh, a lease proposal, in general, basically, with a lease proposal, it's basically an offer of lease. It wasn't a full proposal to look at. But basically, what we were looking at is that, if the city let you do so, then they will construct the conference center. Uh, they will do the white box construction, which means it's kind of similar to do the mall. Do everything with exception of finishing off the inside. And then the city will use this remaining funds in order to finish the inside of the facility. You say to whatever happens, they do whatever they, they will. And then they then release the facility back to, to the city, and the city will let you figure it off at any, at any juncture that they would. Uh, there were, there was one, after that process, oh, there was another firm that offered a similar kind of arrangement. We really did not look at that, because it's just, uh, uh, one of the females that you, that you got critical company, but it wasn't of, of, uh, proposal, of sort, or whatever. But I did want you to know that there's a, there's an offer, one that we have in person, and one, uh, that have asked for a meeting, uh, concerning, uh, a lease proposal, uh, to basically fund the construction of the conference center. Uh, they will take our plans and use the building and, and the city will lease it back to them. Now, we considered, we considered, uh, the Von Group's proposal to be non-responsive, uh, primarily because it did not meet terms of the R F P. So we only moved at the three responses that was responsive to the R F P. And that's what we got these two. They all was very good. Uh, it's kind of a hard decision to make. Pinion, uh, Pinion and, uh, Elkens really was kind of the top two back in time. Great company, their prices was, uh, the highest of the, of the three. And, uh, we just, there were certain things about Pinion and Elkens that just kind of set them apart. Uh, one of those, uh, those things that set both of them apart was that they are approached to utilizing local vendors, local, um, trades and things like that. And so I think both Elkens and Pinion was pretty good in that regard. Uh, and then, uh, the reason, I believe, why we really selected Elkens, uh, was, uh, their, uh, knowledge, uh, with the plans that were submitted to them and what have you. Now, if I may say, both Pinion and Elkens showed that they really gave, put some interest and put some time into reviewing the drawings. One of the things I think was really game changing for Elkens is that they made a suggestion that, uh, that we make some adjustments in the, in the basic design of the building. And when we say the basic design of the building, they not perfect, let's just take that. But if you look at, if you look at the, the construction of the conference center, it's really a metal building. And then you have the stocking, and other thing that give it this, this action and what have you. You did that, because you wanted to, to construct a durable, economical building. One of the things that Elkens suggested is that you have some, some mainstream in there that you can leverage. And the way that the, the, uh, the murals come down within the presence of drawings is that they have found that they have some fashion issues and things like that. You would have to go back and be with, with, uh, leaking and things like that. And so, but that, that, and I did talk with the architect, that's really not that big of an issue. They, they are looking into that. And so, those are one of those discussions that we would have. But it did show that they really gave some time and attention to it. Their, their cost and, and Pinion's cost wasn't that far apart. And then the timelines, the timeline, uh, really went to, to Elkens. In addition to that, Elkens is charging us a fee of about thirty five thousand dollars per month for their services. And then you have other things that, uh, that's faculty that I won't take the time to kind of go over. But the long and short of it is that we decided on Elkens. Now, once we decided on Elkens, then it's a matter of getting we to approve them. And then we will literally, uh, employ them to get involved with, with literally everything of the project. And the reason why that's important is because one of the things, and one of the reasons for taking the approach of using a construction manager at risk is that you can get that individual involved early on in the design process, before the design process is concluded. Then you can get that individual's capability to look at the drawings just like I am. And literally, uh, at least Pinion and that, and, uh, Elkens have already offered some suggestions to them that we are actively taking it hard. And what happens is that you're able to refine the, 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 uh, design process in order for the building to be a constructive for less. And then literally, I, uh, best kind of also, kind of work with them in order to solidify those decisions and so forth. And so, that's one of the reasons for employing a constructive manager at risk, so we can kind of, uh, reduce that cost. And then, you would have individuals from the city to actually be there at this stage to ensure that we get local vendors. We can look, we have each of these vendors to, to give us a list of prospective subs and whatever that they are, that they use. And so, uh, just looking at the list, they actually, we don't qualify people. But, you know, there has to be some way to try to get a little bit of involvement. That's one of the things we would do also. So the thing that we do have to do, if I can say it that way, is get them, uh, basically get an agreement, uh, codified in order to avoid Elkens to engage into that. And if I may say, as a brief aside, uh, we approved them, uh, at our last meeting. And by the time we come back to do, it would have been seven weeks. Seven weeks on the construction process is way too long to, uh, maybe about seven weeks. Way too long to make this decision, and you're talking about construction. I have some ideas, uh, and I will be getting the city manager and others of, 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 of some ideas on kind of streamlining that process. Because time, you were talking about this money, for example. Let's say if Elkens was employed, and it took us, say, two months to make that decision, that would cost us at their rate a minimum of seventy thousand dollars, plus the cost of, of, you know, the folks that's on the job that's not taking, uh, many, minimal progress and things like that. So, so we don't find a way to shorten that, that curve. It can not only stretch out the time of the project, but it also can, uh, cost dollars. Right now, uh, when it comes to the time, uh, Elkens project that the, that the facility can be finished in about thirteen months. And, uh, that, and that's twelve months of actual construction. Uh, and, uh, by another month when it comes to, uh, some post-out stuff and what have you. Uh, and that does include pre-construction phase. Any questions? I'm sorry, but we will be getting with the finance committee, uh, on Elkens proposal at the end of this month.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bennett. Uh, I'm thankful that I gave the finance committee, uh, this is all my finance committee. Uh, incredibly, uh, our meetings are spaced apart like that, but it does have to go by our finance committee. Uh, and we will do our diligence to make sure that we be as efficient as we can. I also understand, uh, the, the change that Elkens presented and so forth. And, uh, I like the fact that, uh, contract at risk, because it, it saved on this a lot of change orders. You know, people come and change orders because, you know, it's mainly differently. But it's saved in that aspect. So, but really, uh, our finance committee, uh, will, will be doing this as, as you present that to them at, at their meeting. Uh, then we would, uh, the city council would, would, would take, uh, move forward. Questions, any other, what question?
I have one question. How, how is fair the December roundtable timeline that you have for that part?
Well, it kills. Uh, basically, right now, uh, I would imagine that you will have a final decision to proceed with the, with the C M R, uh, during your, this is, I'm doing a November meeting. And so that means that you're going to be looking at, uh, at our start date, uh, unless something changes, somewhere between January, uh, and February for next year. So literally, uh, pretty much kind of, it breaks off to this month right now. Uh, the drawings are seventy five percent complete. We, you know, we want to try to get this all met, of Elkens and people in, in place right now. Otherwise, it, it doesn't fully defeat the, the advantages of the chair. But, uh, but it just helps. To answer your question, life is going to be January or early February.
Where are we about to excel?
We're already on the hotel. Uh, that's my secret, I'm assuming. I'll be doing a little procedure. Um, but, but, but there are, there are no firm commitments to the hotel. Actually, I will be meeting with someone, uh, Gary Harrison on the hotel. Uh, the hotel, my, this is great. Either mine or this is our, our plan to have to start a hotel, uh, either at the same time on the heels of the conference center. But they have a hotel, and the hotel will be completed about the same time. And so, my goal is to have both the hotel and the conference center completed about the same time. And I haven't put the, uh, put the, the rest of the parking garage. Literally, it's my hope to have, have a parking garage, the hotel, and the conference center completed at the same time. Uh, with, with concessions, uh, we are, we are probably in a mission, and we're working to try to make that a reality. But we have no firm's, firm commitment right now. But we do have, uh, a lot of positive interest. And once we actually, uh, the more serious people will see that this commission is concerning the conference center, the more interest we are having. Uh, so a lot of want to make sure that you want to follow through on what you want to do regarding that area in, in the past. But, and you said all of that, we have some very positive interest in the, the hotel and the conference center.
Ron, is, is there an active R F P for the hotel right now?
No, and the likelihood is that there will not be. Uh, the likelihood is that we will negotiate with the old hotel. So it will probably be negotiated right now. We've already, uh, put out, uh, multiple R F Ps with little results. And what happens is that one of the things we're trying to do is that they would spend their time and penalties elsewhere as opposed to respond to the R F P. Uh, they'd rather not have to compete for it, they'd rather negotiate. And it is, and it literally, this is what happened. If they, if, if it comes down to time and money and what have you, and it does cost them significantly to put forth the R F P, they'd rather invest that funds or something, that they know is going to happen. And so, we will negotiate an arrangement, and they will negotiate if we want this all for your arrangement. If I can say it that way.
You say it that way, but I understand what you're saying. I mean, I'd rather negotiate with you, but I don't think that's the right way to do it. I mean, I, I really, truly think you've got a process, and we're talking about spending tons of funds, and what we're talking about doing.
I mean, no, but.
No, no.
It will be all private funding.
Well, then you've got the splash dollars for, for.
No. No, but if I may say, all the thing, right now, if there's a hotel that don't own the site, it will be one hundred percent, uh, private dollars, with the exception of the land. We will lease, I think, uh, we discussed before, the likelihood is that the dirt will be, will be leased. Uh, there, there, you know, there's some tax payments and whatever, that, that, you know, you grant anyway. There'll be other incentives like that. But when it comes to construction of the hotel, it will be really one hundred percent, uh, private dollars. And then obviously, the city will receive the tax revenue and things like that on it. So that's one of the reasons why, uh, we're saying we have put out several R F Ps.
I would like that, I would like that. And I, if we can back in the public money that year, we'll come here to meet. But still, I just like to advertise and respect it rather than the, uh, negotiate respect. That's just, that's the way I am, and the way I would see it. So, but I'm only one consideration.
If I may say, also the commission, uh, and I, I definitely understand the sentiment, but it is kind of surprising, of people from Atlanta to wherever know we want a hotel there. And so, they know that we want a hotel there, and they know also that a hotel is kind of needed in this area. Frontway really is in a really great place and position. Uh, in another five years, if, if things continue to go the way that they're going, city and public really going to be proud of themselves. There's a lot happening, there's a lot of interest with what's happening now with the Valentine's Day, the Florida storm down town, or whatever, uh, we're looking at the North Street Stadium, we're looking at, you know, we're really doing a good job. And if we just don't slow things down and, and put, you know, trip ourselves up for another five years, I think it's going to surprise the decisions that you're making today.
And, and, and for me to be, that's a good segue for me at this juncture. I understand when you're saying timeframes and all that kind of stuff. But my seat here deems that I am prudent in my review of everything that comes before this commission. Excluding timeframes, I am going to be prudent. I understand what you're saying about the dollars this, the dollars that. But I am in no expedited posture to not take a prudent look at every dollar and cent that this commission is charged with before we expound those resources and places and then we regret it, because we have been to expeditions in dispersing funds that we could have taken a more prudent look and closer look to make sure that we are good stewards over every penny that our citizens expect us to be good stewards. So excuse this commission, speaking for myself, if I don't exercise my diligence in making sure that I've looked at everything, and I've crossed every T and as many I's as I possibly can before I move forward with making a decision. That's my piece.
I think, uh, that's what this whole commission will be about. Uh, and, uh, that's why I said, uh, to go to our finance committee and then we'll come back to, to the city commission. Any questions for, for Bennett? If not, thank you, uh, thank you very much. Thank you for the excitement still going on with this splash pad game. We will get it done, uh, it may take us a minute to get, or we're going to keep going.
We're going to keep going.
That's right. So thank you very much. Alright, alright. Who I know, uh, misses, uh, I need to consider for Google, uh, consider Google, I'll come with third. Who, I know, Misses, I need to consider for approval, consider approval of House of the Third Two Thousand Eighteen Regrets Scheme Meeting Minutes. Take a minute, take a second to approve that.
Most likely, it's going to be approved on Tuesday, third, twenty eighteen, Regrets Scheme Meeting Minutes.
Second, for approval of House of the Third Two Thousand Eighteen Regrets Scheme Meeting Minutes. They have a further discussion here in the hallway from this way to right hand. That motion carries, thank you. And number three, consider approval of bond issued by housing authority. Mr. Harris is presenting.
P. Mayor Harvey, I'm Mr. Harris. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Zachary Harris, attorney with the Department of Hunter Plain here in Brunswick. And it's my pleasure to be here tonight and have to be House of the Authority of City of Brunswick after your approval of the authority's issuance of plan issuance of tax revenue bonds pursuant to section one forty-seven of the Internal Revenue Act. And in my ass where is the housing authority asking for the city's approval? Section one forty-seven of the, the code determines for support revenue obligations in this country requires that City of Brunswick has the unit local government having jurisdiction over the issuance of the bonds, which is the housing authority of City of Brunswick. Is presented, must prove the issuance of the bonds. The other party for this is going to be county, I'm sorry, not a party, but the other approving unit local government, the county, Department of County Commission meetings since they are the unit local government having jurisdiction of the project. The proceeds of sale of the revenue bonds will be used by the authority's finance rehabilitation of Lynn Times Apartments. These are apartments located in the area of eighty, Lynn Marsh Drive, Brunswick. Right across from the village at Blue Place Mall, which is the public shopping center in our town. Neither, the authority's issuance of big bonds or your approval of the issuance deny a full creative financial obligation to the city of Brunswick. These revenue bonds issued by the Brunswick Housing Authority are the revenues of Lynn Times Apartments. So, basically, the rents will be displayed.
Or are the, or is the roof going to change the name of this apartment?
Those, basically, the owner of the property is Lynn Times Housing Partners. There's a plan changing ownership, that they, they are the current owners of the property. In cooperation with Vias, which is a nationally recognized provider of affordable housing communities that currently operates in a minimum of twenty-three states, including Georgia. They have several bodies in Atlanta. Lynn Times Housing Partners, again, the property owner. In cooperation with these entities, Brunswick Housing Authority identified Lynn Times Apartments as a rehabilitation project that's consistent with the housing authority's mission to provide quality affordable housing in Brunswick community. This project will result in renovation, upgrade, improvement to this campus and individual units. And particularly, the campus up there, including greater pedestrian access, ADA compliant pedestrian access, further incorporate the Lynn Times Apartments into the surrounding area, which may have motivated next to a high-traffic, successful for a fair area. The village, which is public shopping center, Walmart is nearby, plus salsa next to the restaurant. And then, of course, the mall complex nearby. The, for your information, the project is a very comprehensive renovation of the individual units and the campus. The improvements to the units will include an apartment selling priced right, new kitchen appliances, a range, refrigerator, microwave, vent hood, washer and dryer, HVAC plumbing, electrical fixtures, including the bathroom, kitchen countertops, cabinets, hardware, water heaters, lighting, and other electrical fixtures, including insulation, ground crawl, disruptors in all the potentially wet areas, laminate, I'm sorry, refinished flooring. All units interior will be repainted with low VOC, with volatile, man compound paint. Those are VOCs are the things that make blackberry tarnish and the paint smell rough. New doors and windows, energy efficient doors and windows, added insulation, gutters and downspouts on the exterior, roofing, as needed. Smoke, carbon dioxide detectors throughout every unit, just to sort of hit some of the high points of the units. Support for campus goes, new landscaping throughout, new perimeter fencing along roadways. Instead of different channel fencing, we'll have decorative metal fencing. Community eating and computer rooms onsite, ADA compliance sidewalks, parking space and ramps, and rails, curb cuts, all the ports of U F A N's guidelines. gazebo pavilion with alcohol benches, community garden, and other communities they've installed well, crafted raised, professional garden beds, and inspection and installation of irrigation throughout the hot theme. You have in front of you some information, including the executive summary of the projects of Lynn Times One and Two. This is, they're technically separate apartment complexes. It's in part a drainage well that separates the two areas, which in order to get your leasing office, you have to, to go out of the unit, out of the complex, we have to break through the soggy area. So, there will be installed pedestrian access across the unit, running the two areas, Lynn Times Apartments. Also, the new package is the Tepra certificate, hearing officer, Senator Hartman, attesting to the public hearing, a notice in the newspaper, publisher that they included. I think this was a public notice hearing, they issued no penis, no hives. So, that certification is included with the package. And it's proposed approval to be signed by Mayor Harvey to motion approve the issuance of the bonds. I'm happy to have to answer more questions. You might have, it's for John Mayfield, and I would ask you a favorable consideration.
What's the question to have?
Mr. Harris, how is it that the revenue bond?
Oh, the time changing, the bonds are written by, and then they are secured by the revenue collective from the business. And then, these are, these are, all these units are covered by a housing central program contract that will be renewed this year for twenty years term. So, while these units all will be renovated and upgraded and made very nice, the rent paid by the residents will always be capped at thirty percent maximum of their, they will never be obligated to pay more than thirty percent of their income. Those residents are qualified.
At this point, I doubt the authority, that the new four housing community, who, this complex and how it's already having partnership?
No, the housing authority is not a partner with the property. The housing authority is, is the issuer of the bonds.
Right. The question is, you know, is that why go to the authority, why can't they go to the ADA?
They do. Because, because the purpose of the Lynn Times Apartments is to provide four houses. Everybody looks at that, and the property owner is in the business of providing four houses. They thought it was very good, yeah, basically. But yes, you're right, this makes it a vast ADA for the consensus as well.
So, they must not pay back the full A can have, only the dollars, just for rent? Is that how, is that how they're doing it? Or is it sort of, and how are they going to complete this work with, as this says in here, mind the destruction to the residents? Because you're talking about doors and windows and kitchen appliances. I mean, it's, it's like everything should have taken any studs just about.
The downtown is on my passion, so.
Right.
With your location, this is primarily the elderly community.
Right, prior to senior housing.
Right, senior housing. And so, my question, relocation is one of them. But then, but then you said something that would end one of your sentences. You said something about obligation, and so I had to go back and look into it to make sure that the city is not obligated to do what you did.
City is not obligated, city is not, city is not a party to the issue of the service of these bonds. They will not be obligated by any activity at the project site. Your role in evaluating this project is based on your status as the unit local government and jurisdiction of the city housing authority. The property owner has budgeted a significant sum and has a plan in place for relocating tenants on an absentee basis. I think I identified the five units, five households that they will be retrofitted for ADA compliance and as well as visual and hearing impaired upgrades as prime candidates for relocation, they estimate. And hope that it will not take any longer than three weeks for those units to be overhauled so that they can get those tenants back in. Other tenants, time changing of other tenants that are in need of relocation due to construction that will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. They will, they have a plan for company for sort of community meetings, town hall meetings that are at the apartments as well as real business directly to the tenants as to the timeline of construction and the schedule of work and what their contact information and amenities would be if they were altered outside of their estimated impact. So, if they were particularly sensitive to construction, noise, dust, or paint, or anything like that, the property owner has, has a handle on the census to address moving and relocation costs compared to their property. Now, no resident will come out of pocket to be relocated during construction.
Any further questions? I'm in.
You heard again, you come in.
I was going to comment, Mayor Burton discussed obligation. This is just kind of the situation that obviously we're committed to have a housing authority jurisdiction in the housing authority, so project is geographically located outside of St. Levens. And that as well, county also had a sign on the road. So, the housing authority jurisdiction extended far outside of St. Levens. So, should the county add their own housing authority, if we know what the essential sign on was. But it's kind of the, either way, they're obligated, they're obligated to pay.
And I read that, when I was reading the record code for myself, then too, regarding this. And then I went back and read the information, and I saw that, it said that we were, but then it was something he said in one of his sentences. And I heard it signed to me, maybe I misunderstood, it signed as if, it was saying obligation. And so, that's what I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Because I, I'm.
I called that a comment, you're right.
No, no problem, I just wanted to make sure for myself to be clear. But I did, I understood that because we are the persons that are considered issuers as far as the housing authority being the issuer of the bonds. And we have the jurisdiction of the housing authority, so I'll bet. But I had to use the code for myself too, so.
For the question, please. The fact that this project is in the county, and there's a bike, we, the city and the county are working together to make things better for all of you. That's one great thing about this. So, no further questions, resign and take motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve that the full revenue bond issued by the housing authority I'll make a motion that we approve the total revenue margin, which is our housing authority's, to the public that they're paying out in housing authority.
Second, most second for, consider the new one that might issue by our authority for this project in time, I had this farments. They're still discussing. All right, please raise your right hand. Of course, that motion carries down. Thank you. Thank you, sir. We're deciding not to give it to you. For sure. So we will sign with the not giving it to you. Thank you. Our next live on agenda is Senator Fuell's financial report that was submitted through the 2018. My name is the director, it's Captain Mills.
I'm sorry, this is set time again. I'm going to call him now. It's one time again this time. These are financial reports as of September 30th. And that goes at two thousand and ten hundred and forty. This is the year. So it's some of the options. Cash balance is two hundred and twenty-two thousand in the general fund as of September 30th. The year today, extended total revenue of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. But as we mentioned before, these first few months of this year, we're lending taxes to our government. And this is that term, doesn't lie. We are ten point nine, nine, ten point nine three percent unpresented revenue collection, which will pitch up. And nine point nine percent under budgeted expenditures. Lots, you can see the monthly figures there. Here today, we are at eleven point two three percent higher than we were last year at this time. And also in top of the water tax, we are thirteen point forty-five percent higher at this point this year than we were last year. On the next page, just lots five, period, actually from here right now. Cash balance is a million four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And basically the projects left in there are the Fort Convention Center and some money that we had set aside for water waste water. And those are the only two things that are actually active at this point. Next page is plus six. And we'll see we have a cash at the top, four million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. First two columns show you what the project budget is for the entire class period. And how much we've spent since it started at very beginning. And then the next three columns show you what we have budgeted for this current fiscal year and what we have spent in the current fiscal year. And then the difference between what we spent for the year and what we have budgeted for the year. And those, we've not spent a lot so far in the first three months of the quarter. But things are carrying out and the fire for maintenance will be paid for. There's a lot of land and stormwater and sidewalks. So those are, those funds will spend up a lot quicker. Next page is the community development added in, two thousand seven ninety-seven. That's just the condo to yield for the C A D apartment, the C A D employees now that apartment. It's Roseville Harris Center, Volta Purple Center. Grant money, fifty-two thousand dollars so far. We have transferred paper from the general fund, twenty-one, twenty thousand dollars here today. Pre-credit income, four thousand and some interest that have thirty-four dollars. We have a net essential level of our expenditures of seven thousand eight fifty-eight. And cash balance of six thousand four hundred and eighty in that fund. General items, I'll just give the cash balance thirty-four eight twelve, which not much that's been done in that. Ori, the community development fiddle has a cash balance of thirteen thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. And there's been very little activity in those accounts for the year. Cypressville Recapture, there has been no activity in that account for this year. There's cash balance still there, six thousand three sixty-one, which hopefully will be spent there this year when we close that, that fund out. Senior Restrict Commons is right under that. There's a cash balance of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and no activity in that fund due this year. Next page has the sanitation fund. We'll see if we have any close of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and a high closer than seventy-four thousand. There's a cash balance of four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We're now starting to see property tax money coming in as we start collecting on the day. So that fund will fully increase in dollar value. The, no, no, the public services, the traffic public services. Sanitation, the old cities and one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars were done on trash pickup, which is pretty much a flood of all videos every month. It runs around one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four. Illegal revenues picked up four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And then under that, just briefly, we've got store order utility. I'll probably expand that as we build along with it right now. Since we just kind of, we're starting to collect some things there. We have things we've had, seven thousand dollars were transferred in, one hundred and thirty thousand from the general fund, which we had in our budget to do. And you'll see there are expenditures, which are mostly on the payroll. And then there's supplies and things like that, seventy-two thousand dollars, again, a sixty-five thousand. That hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the general fund has lost, the store order utility will be paid back as we start saving the store order utility. Funds, so we don't stipulate property taxes. And cash balance is sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty million dollars. Then we have the neighborhood recreation. Fifteen hundred dollars of electricity on the recreation. And Jim, is that, that's the lighting, the lighting you have out there, is it? Right, power grid. That's what the electricity is under recreation again. Look up there, there's the recreation maintenance, the touch repair maintenance building. That was three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars for some carpeting that's there. And it's over five thousand dollars to save us. And very nice panel, so you guys can go type in the food service of his, Roseville Harris Center. And those are basically just salaries on the act of the air and the building expenses. The normal electricity, gas, food for the kids, touchover supplies and that type of thing. A total of that of six thousand eight, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. The total rental for all the recreation park, including the Roseville Harris Center, put in months of one thousand five hundred and fifty-five. So, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Mills?
I have a question, where did the car came from?
Honestly, it went in the offices.
Anybody?
Yeah. I think it went in, it went in, in the back office and it went in the front office. And then Ms. Booker's office in that area back there. It went in the front office where the manager, who's a very experienced manager. Yeah, I get that, yeah. It was Lee Kennedy, so who get that? They've been in for a couple of years since the first, her, right.
The roof, the roof, we can have this, all we think to.
That's part of her email, she needs to check some stuff.
That's why I was gonna say, first. My question, Kate, is with the, with the Roseville Harris, the most, so. How will we historically, at this point, will transfer funds to today?
I don't have my budget, but that's, that's very low. We are well below what we budgeted. I want to hear your best answer and stuff. Yes. But I think generally also what happens is at the end of the year, the CRC will generally give us extra money back and give out what they had left. And so we always get some extra grant money at that point. So we don't have to pay out to the last generation for those first months as, as long as we've got. And we can actually, we can handle the budget ironically this year.
And that's, that's why I asked, cause I know it seems like each year we continue to go back and we have to transfer to them. And I know that CRC has been a big part of that. But also to, to, to find out what the foundation is actually contributing as well. I have a meeting tomorrow this morning asking as well with them tomorrow.
Obviously.
Okay. That's, that's what I ask, cause I, I make suggestions to.
How many is us?
Which is true. And I ask, cause I make suggestions to them and I don't know how much they're actually receiving. So I just kind of go through sometimes.
I just wanted to add, we have two contracts. And then as you see, our city having additional grant funds already this year. So it's really profitable and more money to see their systems operations. So, and in the case of foundation, we could be buying equipment from things, but potentially we're not going to come through the system. They're buying a trailer from the foundation, right? So they're not possible.
I agree. I agree. I love her.
If you have a question that asks, we're gonna aim for the funding records.
Thank you for saying that.
I have a question about page one.
What's that?
Page three. Under, under the plus six. Said receive from store. One of those, one of those funds we see.
I believe that's her bond, is that?
Her bank?
Yeah, I think they're, they're joint, it's going into something joint, they can, they were doing some stuff too. And plus rules require that if anything is spent, it has to come out of plus. And so the money that comes in forward has to go into plus. So that's why I showed them they're, they're giving us money for their part of it.
It's medical.
It's medical.
There's been a large store improvements by the management improvements are going to come over in the future. And so the portion of plans they, for water storage, which is one contract. So they're reversing that. Hutsches have been reversing, they're paying that.
They're paying that bill.
They're paying a portion of the little bit.
Okay, okay. So the Global Fort Convention Center, that's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars there. Two dollars.
Three hundred. Oh, the money that's in the payback?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I suppose that is.
Most anything else, or is it all?
Um, I don't think that it's free, I didn't get the exact time, but all the goals that I've seen.
It's, 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 it's soil, it's the property.
Yeah.
Your architect, the new foreman, I put up a whole statement, he's chatting to us. He said, he and I are an administrative team, we did something like that. So we had to use the workforce to save administrative costs.
I think, I think it's right.
So the majority is the architect, and there's just a small, there's no, so.
And I, and that is the, 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 the. And my, my next question, but it'll come up when we get ready to go over the utilities, store order, utility. But, but we can move on from this. I asked.
Okay, further discussion. Hearing the, I have a motion, to approve the final orders result.
Second.
Most second for proceed approval of valid report as presented in further discussion. Hearing the, all right, please raise your right hand. That motion carries down. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mills. Mills, I have a question. Bill, if you can get us, or if you can do the finance committee, get us a copy of the interest that we earned, said to be in the Georgia water.
Actually, the interest that we earned on the water?
The Georgia, Georgia water, so, the Georgia water, so.
Okay, yeah. And because in fact, that's something on the financial meeting. Um, Mr. Rogers from Crown South wants to talk to the financial.
Let's talk to him.
So I was wanting to get to the part of information that we had.
Yeah.
Exactly what us.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
So I was gonna get some information.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to grab for your, on the plus six. Would you put the start date and the end date in the report?
Okay. I'll put up here.
Okay, thank you, Mills, commissioners. We are, are at, at six, Senator Fuell of Resolution Number two thousand eighteen, that's seventeen, pre-application for a man named Constable, funding a fiddle. To proceed the management requirement protected.
Hey, Ms. Harvey, I'm from the Harris Commissioners. What you have reported tonight is a request to submit a pre-application for a grant. Through the, through the Department of Natural Resources, the Water Conservation Fund. When we got news of this information in August, we looked to see what type of project would be suitable for a grant. And since it involves B and R and trails, we went to try and tie into the project that we just completed or in the process of completing the trails from Liberty Ship Park to Havre Park. And we thought, we went back and looked at some of the plans that had been done. We found a two thousand fifteen study that was done that suggested the construction of amphitheater at the Liberty Ship Park. It was called Civil Air Park, um, the, the study. So what you have reported is this pre-application that we have to submit to B and R before October thirty-first. And we'll be considering for the grant funds. The way that the process works is you submit the pre-application grant to them. They review the grants that come from the state as from November to January. And then in February and March, you are getting aware of when not to submit a full application that then goes to the National Park Service for consideration of funds. Georgia has received between five and six million dollars in grants to spend. And so we wanted to look for a project that was sizable. The maximum amount that a grant will provide is up to a hundred thousand dollars. It does acquire a fifty percent match. And so that's why we're kind of seeing tonight, not only the pre-organization, but also the commitment that if you apply for a project and we have the funds and we're willing to spend the fifty percent match, should we get a grant. So what you have in the package was a couple of things. You shouldn't have a ringering. It should be drawn of the type of pavilion that we're looking to construct. And this type of pavilion is significantly different than what the architects and engineers consultants had proposed. Because what they were proposing was more of a sail-like tinsel material structure. When we priced that out, I don't know where they got that finish from, but that, that size of about fifty feet by fifty-six feet on a stage is about four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars priced at the time. So where they got that finish from. If a sail, they're about twenty thousand dollars. But we did look and find something that was more aligned with structures that are already out there and park, with the taken shelter. And something that was really good to the character of the park. And so you have a ringering of what type of pavilion or shelter we would be looking at. And this is not the definitive picture or the type of shelter that we would be looking at. We would go out to different vendors to see what we, we, we did, I would give that instead of that, just still be, we would have something that would have some closure, some breadth around the still wings to get some more stability and to get a little bit more natural to it. So this is just a representation of the size that we're looking at. About fifty feet by fifty, fifty-six feet, which is a good size stage and cover for the pavilion. You also have an estimate, a cost estimate of the entire project, which should not only include the pavilions, but also hillside seating terraces. They would be mostly grass, but they would also be reinforced by concrete so that that would have some stability to the structures that we graduated. And you have a picture here that shows a location of the hillside terrace and enclosed pavilion as well. Where are they?
We don't have that.
And who, who, who?
We don't have this, we don't have this.
Okay. So right there, the, the structure is here and that's southwest corner of the, and the terrace is here, just like, uh, J's already. It's a big pavilion here, yeah. This is a much bigger.
You, you, you relocate pavilion, so you got the city from that.
Right. It's still not clear. It's not clear, babe.
It's where the big pavilion is down with the waterfront line.
So they're gonna remove and re-locate.
We've got a big, not a big.
And, right.
Of course, this is just a brand application, it's not a personal, this is just a request. From the state here.
Yeah, that's a long, long distance with a, with a walk that you have through it. And, and that seems, the distance between the seating and the, and like people are gonna launch here and it's gonna be a much bigger thing. There's a, there's a whole, there's a sidewalk and other, you know, grilling stations and. That's the white tanks, correct, we got all those are painting, grills, the grill area is correct. Mm-hmm. So the amphitheater or whatever is quite a distance from the terrace seating.
Location we located.
The old school park.
Okay. And then what's envisioned, cause fifty by fifty is big. So I mean, if you're just talking about a band or music, but if you're, what's the, what's the vision for the fifty by fifty? So the vision is for musical venue, also for other types of adult concerts, for musical productions, for gathering, for convenience, things like that.
Who, so you, you, you have a unit?
The seating? I do not have. And is it necessary, if you've got the storage, I don't think it's, it's not necessarily exactly what's gonna happen, but the storage would block the view of the water.
And that can be changed. This is just a representation of the state as a group, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
We come back, we can alter the design, we can look in the back. This is what, and the number of seats can be added or taken away. So I think at this point, I'm just thinking, to the state, my idea, roughly, if we're looking at seating.
Okay.
Further questions for city manager, commissioners? That this is a step through the master plan, and it can be retooled and changed by the city manager, say.
Who else is looking with you on? Now, Ellen's been working with me and also Thomas is working with me.
So really, we just submit one grant, yes?
Yeah. And we'll, we'll explain at some point to G, Ray, Liberty Ship Park, because.
Around the theater, right? Good name.
We bring that to the board. Brother? What's?
Like, but there's areas of the park that the water just pools. Right, there is some funding in. Sidewalk is starting to. There is some funding in the process of the drainage improvements and for. Okay, yes.
Also, we need to, we have a role as the state's co-committee in the way. We need to put this, for, like, the job, he was one of our commissioners. Co-committee, just co-committee, anybody who's, so, we're living there too, like, uh. We're looking at it, like, um. No, we just write it. Anyway, so they just throw the question of the concerned uh, uh, concern with master plan of issues of this grant uh for uh Leadership Park.
And just to add, the funds are available on a term of eighteen, nineteen, twenty years for this process in the amount originally sixty-nine thousand dollars. Is whether the national.
The further questions, I'll take them off.
I think we move to request the staff move forward with grant application, raise six thousand one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
From the water second for approval of the resolution, excuse me, of a pre-application for land and conservation of water funding. Uh, any further questions, comments? Here in the hall, family, please, right here. I will care again, too. Thank you, uh, city manager. All right, move right on. Uh, I will step until approval to purchase this back on truck. Uh, Mr. Rick Charner, Assistant Roadwork Director.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, coming before you nine to discuss issuing a purchase order for approval. Uh, City of Brunswick Stormwater Utility is in need of purchase in a new vacuum truck. Uh, the purpose, per nine, is to authorize Mayor Harvey to sign a purchase order in the amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars for the purchase of a backdoor vacuum truck for the cleaning and maintenance of the City of Brunswick storm drain system. The reason we're coming before you now is because our current truck is a 2009. It has been broken down since April. We have no ability to clean storm drains. Thank God we haven't had any purchase claims, so it's needed this year. Uh, we have rented some equipment to do that in Europe and about twenty-four hundred dollars per day.
Should we go back on?
If the back, well, this is new and it's a back door.
The one that we back on is on the back down?
Yes, sir. Uh, we've had numerous chassis, active component issues. Uh, it's been out of service, as I said, since April of 2018. It's at the International Bureau, which is, you would hope the place it should be if you work on. And they're working with the manufacturers trying to repair the truck, so far, but it hasn't succeeded. Uh, we've already spent over fifty thousand dollars. That was part of this first, uh, to this instance now. And currently, our bills are about twenty-five thousand dollars for repairing the truck. They still not repaired. So that's kind of where we're at. Our facts and findings. Um, we are definitely in need of a new vacuum truck as soon as possible to catch up on storm drainage maintenance. Our storm drainage maintenance continues to fall behind while the wait for our truck to be repaired. Environmental Products of Georgia is the vendor of the backdoor truck that we're looking at, uh, in which we recommend purchasing. Uh, they have sold many units, uh, many units of government entities in Georgia, including Chatham County. Uh, the Public Works Department has researched and have been looking at this truck about six twenty-seven teams. And this is something that's been on the table for a while because we have had numerous problems with the other vehicles. The backdoor truck is currently available under Georgia State Contract Pricing. Environmental Products currently has the truck we might purchase and stock. We're asking for approval to issue a purchase order so that we can take delivery of the truck in November. Uh, we plan to do this through GMA and if we do the actual GMA purchase after December 3rd, we don't have to pay the payment for the first year until December of 2019. So we'll defer it for a year if it was kind of to get some money into our storm volume for that. If we decide to wait until that December 3rd cutoff date before we make a decision, they cannot continue to hold the truck. He's already been holding it about a month for us. So if that doesn't happen, that means he's gonna sell this truck and we'll have to get back to line again to get a truck, maybe sometime in January also, it was possibly a price increases before then. I know Commissioner Harris is going strong about trying to go before the finance committee. And the reason we are asking just to issue the purchase order now is a good faith thing. That's what we're trying to do. So they know we're serious about buying the truck and then they will hold that truck so that we can do the financing in December. Our Environmental Product Backdoor, twenty-one hundred plus, Georgia State Mid Price is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. The unique thing about this particular company is they have a turnkey maintenance program. That brings thirteen thousand two hundred dollars annually. Have to make a total purchase order this first time for three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, we do recommend that turnkey program. What that does is it does two free maintenance services per year where they completely change all the hydraulic fluids and everything in the truck. And they also repair any mechanical breakdowns, with the exception of wearable items like a belt or something like that. And they have mobile crews that work around the state of Georgia. And right now, we have to have it towed to Jacksonville, Savannah. Right now, we're having it blacked, sure, the international dealer that we have now.
That, um, they can fix it properly?
Arsenal.
They can fix it properly?
And they never fix it yet. They have a.
And where you go to break?
Um, no, because they wouldn't work. They would still have to go to the International Bureau because it's a chassis issue this time, not actually vacuuming the vacuum truck that's broken. Uh, and they have an instrument cluster that's been on vacuum work for the last three weeks this time. And that's the latest recommended repair. I said, we're going through this. We got it back at our shop for one day at a time before it broke again and had to tow back.
So let me ask you, did you consider that?
Um, no.
Yeah, I have to talk.
Because we had extremely terrible service from this truck and.
Did you brush the chassis? Did you brush?
I, I priced a camelback that's in the same price range, also priced this existing truck having had to rework and redone, um, to do that and give us basically the rest of the year for almost everything. It was over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to recondition this truck. I did look at that. So, you know, again, the back door is heads and heels above them, plus the maintenance, the service that they can give us. Uh, that truck was broken down. Within three days, we get a replacement vehicle. They'll bring them over here. So they have it extended to make sure that it sticks on time. If not, they have to get us another vehicle to use. And we won't have this issue of buying a tow, you know, sixty, eighty miles out of town, like, you know, five, six hundred dollars on tow bill. So that's a definite benefit for us. Uh, proposed money will come out of the twenty, uh, twenty budget year because we'll be paying it next year. And we have three options there to recommend. Uh, we recommend option one, to accept the bid, issue a purchase order to Environmental Products of Georgia, three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Option two is to accept the bid, initial purchase order to Environmental Products of Georgia, three hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy. And that would be about the turnkey program, or our third option is we can do that at this time. So I would be glad to answer any other questions. I've been thinking about this thing for several years because we've asked.
It's mainly because of the city that uses.
We have Chatham County, it's the closest local one. Uh, they have several units and they told us they're gonna buy more. They never go for another grant right now because it's so far superior in maintenance, plus the service that they give.
I want to ask one question. Uh, how much training, uh, on this equipment do our staff, uh, does the company provide training with this?
They, they do provide training. They will spend as long with us as they need to get them up and running on the back door because it's obviously a different piece of equipment than we've been using. Uh, and back on, they can spread training as well as far as how to operate and we'll get that from them. And because of the mobile guys out in the field, if there's something we run into, we just pick up a phone, make a call, and they're gonna be here to give us a hand with. We're really good at doing, you know, the minor things, if there's belts and stuff like that in our shop, cameras have no problem. But we get the electronic parts, the chassis, like we've got now, that's why we're really worried with some issues.
If you're looking at the turnkey maintenance agreement.
Mm-hmm.
With Environmental Products. I don't know what they. It says that PPG shall guarantee that they put a purchase under this contract about the hours was reported in. But it's second to fourth days.
And I haven't spoken.
Okay, um, but my question is not really applying on that at all, but what, what's the consequence? I mean, they, they say that, they say, okay, well, we, we guarantee that we won't be without, without services for the second days, but then they don't say what happens if they six.
Well, they do, they will give us another vehicle. And we talked to Chad, and they've been using their trucks for like four or five years. They said it's happened once, uh, but I think they have three or four weekends now, uh, in all that time.
The nurses say that in this agreement.
Yeah.
It wasn't.
I don't know.
It is in there.
Um, the trailer, the show, the art, riding truck that happens.
Well, Brian, will you make sure?
I can make sure.
And then the question I had is in item number eleven. Um, it's, it refers to the county twice in that paragraph, but I'm thinking it should refer to the city.
Yeah, this is just a proposal, so, you know, whenever, because they will ensure that they make the, uh, they have the paperwork, correct, we need to make sure. And our proposal is to pay for that and not finance, obviously, that smaller, you know, if they will find it to that, to charge itself.
And the financing will be a lease purchase.
You will have to ask a lot of your, in a chunk, we'll get this through the.
And one thing that I don't like is, I don't like saying towards three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Or what, and I, I understand what you're saying, what you're saying, but it is the chassis, not the, uh.
In this, in this instance.
Not the back on, you know.
Now, in this instance, it's the chassis, but the back on technology is not looked at well. That's the other, most of the difference.
Always with, with the difference in the back on. You stick a mic in and you turn over.
Here's the biggest difference, mechanically, the biggest difference between the back door and the back on. The back on truck has to run over two thousand RPM, which is higher than the engine, like twenty-two, twenty-three hundred RPM for that equipment to work proper. The back door runs at eleven hundred RPM, fairly reliable, and does the same thing. So long-term, you have less wear, tear, heat on your rotor engine, and you'll have less wear, tear on your rotor equipment than interfaces with it as well. So that's a huge difference between the back door. And that's the difference between their product and the others on the market. All of them are high red. It, it's not no accident.
So it's less gas, too.
Absolutely.
Where, where are these, where are the back?
Um, you know, obviously, John, I have to get that, uh, Mr. Case, I have to get that information from you, but, uh, um, Environmental Products, they, they are the sole vendor for the state of Georgia. And they had broken down. They started in Florida, the owners had been doing bad jobs. And now they have a quarter, um, headquarters in Georgia, headquarters. So they have sole rights on this vehicle in Georgia. There's nowhere else to go in, uh, in, uh, purchase this vehicle as far as that was concerned in the state.
But the rig, the chassis, it is a process in Georgia.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, they do. A big process for the.
Yeah, that's the complaint. I know, I know what to hear about. In theory, you gotta think on that, but it could be better.
I did look at a camel.
Never finished it, it could be better.
I did look at a camelback truck that's in the same price range. The, the big difference in it is it has the ability to store the additional orders. You don't have to make as many visits to, to supply your order. It recycles. Uh, that's the only advantage it had over the back door. It still runs in the high reds. We actually did look at one of those trucks here that we're having as well.
Less than the old parts. I understand the process of this truck, and less, you can't, you can do the parts, it can damage, meaning that less chances of breakdown, usually, less than.
And we did have a meeting where he went over a lot of stuff. And I'm pretty good on the technical stuff, you know, I'm better with smaller vehicles. Uh, that's what I did not appreciate through you, but this equipment. The big thing is, you know, when you run that into the idle speed, the new award versus whether that engine up really high, you reduce heat on, reduce wear.
Can, can you, in very basic language, describe how a truck like this works? Well, I know that.
It, it does, it's really two different technologies. So we come up to a basin, our catch basin, the first thing that we're gonna do is make sure that that initial catch basin, and the catch basin will have the storm drain pipe going away from it. We gotta clean the basin first, so we vacuum that basin out, getting all the debris, garbage, all those waters in there, dirt, sand. We suck all that stuff out first. And then we put our hose on there. It has a big section there, it's a huge vacuum. And then we adapt to have a hose that goes, runs through the drains. And we have different bits, even rotors of different places can go on there. Cutting heads, have different roots, empty roots, or it can just blast through. And you try to blast your way through. If it not, sometimes you have to suck that, suck that stuff out and then rerun it again. Sometimes it's over and over. You ever saw a plumber have that feeling of snakes? It's similar to that, except it's run on hydraulics and use water pressure.
Okay, so it, the plan is that it flushes out and opens up any barriers or obstruction. So the, um, the drainage basin that's actually, that degree is sucked down. I'm assuming that go, that's probably pulverized, gets into a cold tank on the vehicle and then.
Then you have to go, we have a place where we dump that and dispose of it, obviously, the dirt and stuff. What if you had to do that, usually several times.
Okay, yeah, I just wet first.
Sure. And that was an advantage to the one with the camelback because you can use all day, but it wouldn't work so hot because it was recycling after order and that was the advantage, yet it still ran high on maintenance.
I can give you wish that as well. The city engineer at office, he was a representative. He actually got very, very detailed to the engineering hours, check, almost every day for truck. He seemed very, very.
They look basically. Just go to basically.
Any further questions, Thomas?
Just something that we wanted to go back to finance and separate. It was in finance, uh, two finance members were afraid back to commission. That first meeting in December is from that process, seeing what happened.
Yeah, we're just paying right here. And we're just requesting authorization for the purchase order so they will hold this truck and we don't have to get put on the waiting list, basically.
I think in theory, is that we don't pick the truck on the lot of, but a lot of trucks still be obstructed. And likely, they're going to have it in here.
Misses, uh, you heard what, uh, uh, city manager, assistant city, because we're not, public work director, uh, also city manager, uh, said about the back on truck. Probably. Any further discussion? Not to say that I don't like seeing the source of this kind of money.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Not the way we spend public money.
Yes, sir.
But any further discussion?
Well, is there a way to, to get initial quotes, but still hang the tongue dead long?
Not, no, not for this back door, because they're the sole vendor of Georgia.
And I think that's what we were saying, the city actually does, they made it their own heads. So they did look at the products of similar nature and came up with this product. I can't say it's the lowest, but usually the state picks the lowest.
It's, I think, I think, I think. Partly is that we know that we had to do this for a long, long time. Maybe where we even got another, Rick, I want to tell you what you're saying about your analysis. Please, don't piss this creep out. I say, you need to have something interior for here, the wheel, that's the best all the time you need to do. And, and Misses, you have plenty of time. Did you ask us if you know the smoke fly? That's what you know, the smoke fly. And it did you in the fly.
Well, we actually did have to find a replacement truck this year. It was actually set in our capital plan for next year. Again, streets were a bit of a budget issue because we thought we had to replace the streets, we were so, so little small. So it really was not a plan because we thought we were gonna get that. I mean, every two months.
Over and over, we'd even gone to the dealer and, and whatever, to make sure that we're not just, it did the shade on the back of the wall. And, and they worked on.
And I took occasions on driving back from Lashville, where the truck breaks down on the way home, and they have to tow it back to Lashville. So, that's what's happening, that's what's, that's what's happening.
We heard it already, and you, and I have a major question, I mean, there's your one, one...
That's what we...
That's what we... Took, took it back, took it back, that's what we...
And, and that, that meeting occurred, we changed our, our direction, and decided we were going to raise companies, and, and raise it to, for the little...
So, here's the point, yes, if, if y'all knew before, I knew at the meeting, and why, and where, and you wouldn't think that I would be hearing that. More information than what I've got here, and we're going to do this thing, it's just, uh, correct, uh, you can play it, I, dude, uh, I don't know. And I'm, again, I'm not saying, Rick, if you...
And, and I apologize for getting thrown into this way, our hope, you know, is, it was going to be fixed, it was going to be fixed, it was going to be fixed, and you want to spend the money, but it's still not prepared, and here we are, you know, like I say, able, but now it's a long time.
It's a lot of emotional turns, too, you just can't keep going the way out, but, but, yeah.
I, I, I think, in fact, you're here, is there any trade-in, right?
Well, there's no...
I'm sorry.
You, you haven't said anything about trade-in, but you should have been given a reason to...
They, they don't, I won't take this on trade-in, but if we can get it repaired, then hopefully, we can sell the equipment and get some money out of, out of the... The way we sit, when you, that's the one bad thing, if you're going through GMA, you can get guaranteed buybacks, but that involves going through the vendors financing and all that. When you go through a GMA, you don't have a guaranteed buyback, so, that's just part of it, but you get a lot of better financing, you have...
Yes, I would like, how was, was the, uh, value to, to the, I got, it's definitely something, I don't know...
Oh, absolutely.
We cut it off, it's a scrap, you know?
I mean, we, we might can sell it once we get it in operation, maybe get, get twenty-three thousand dollars or something. I, I don't know, it's, it's hard to, to know what the market is, or something like that. We can definitely show this to them when you turn it face.
Okay, uh, thank you, Misses, uh, uh, any further com, comments? Here is, I have a thing on, now, I've motioned for the approved, uh, city, uh, for, for utility purchase of the new back on truck, in the amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred seventy dollars.
Full purchase?
Full purchase, yeah, yeah, thanks, all right. Okay, now, votes are down this time. The primary vote was second for two, uh, purchase of back on truck, uh, plus the...
Remember, I made a motion?
Yes.
I want, I guess it should say for, for the, uh...
Purchase, purchase order.
Purchase, okay.
Purchase order, okay, for that amount.
All right.
All right, the term, probably votes are second, any further discussion?
Uh, one question, if we, if this is a placeholder, when they're working in, what other things we decide we don't want to know, we can start with tellings? Or we, or...
But, a, actually, a purchase order is basically something you're trying to say, you're basically saying your mind.
Yes, okay.
So, it's like...
And just a gentle...
There's just no exchange of the right, that's all.
Right, yeah.
It's a pledge, and they have some more questions, yes, they probably seem more interested.
Yeah. Any further questions, comments? All right, here in the matter of court, all right.
Commissioner Faison, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Markham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin, there is, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Hagan, how do you vote?
Yes. Okay, now, motion carries forward one, uh, thank you, Misses, for, for that.
If I could, real quick, I apologize for not addressing professionally, you're, you're facing that, that was my... I appreciate you, you do.
We're very... Okay, uh, we, we, item number eight, you're also at the end of our, uh, print, uh, business, item number eight. Still approval to cancel the November twenty-first, July eighteen regulations.
Did, sir, did we call you?
True. Uh, Representative, uh, City Manager, just to go, just the basis, just the basis.
This commission holds a treaty of means on your first tour, Wednesday of the month. It's occasionally reviewed, counted, and we find that it's conflicting with the holidays and other plans. So, tonight, we're requesting that November one, first, two thousand eighteen, we're going to say, Commissioner, cancel this, this, that, and that. Remember, the divisions staff, commissioners may travel out of town.
Yes. Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner, you heard, uh, talking about City Manager, about, uh, the state of November first, being right before Thanksgiving.
I'm like, I'm going to agree for you.
Second. Second.
Primary votes second for approval of cancellation of November one, first, uh, July eighteen, taking commission meeting, any further discussion? Hearing the all favor, which is right now, motion carries, we're going to cancel that November twenty-first meeting. All right, now, item number nine, alcohol beverage license, renewed, um, make the votes up a minute, uh, still approval of nine, alcohol beverage license renewed. So, now, packing.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners.
Good evening.
I have denied the renewals, uh, for your approval, with your permission, I'll identify nine, and you can vote at the end, if that's...
That'd be fine, sir.
These are all renewals, they've all had current licenses, the first one is, uh, Pinball Palace, and the owner is Mr. Robert Daniel, for beer and wine on premises, consumption on premises. Second one is A D G Ventures, that's doing businesses in Miami, Mexican Grill, the owner is Mr. Abel Garcia, that's for beer, wine, and distilled spirits on Sunday sales, too. Next one is, uh, Galaxy Market, that's, uh, Ray, eight thirty is the, uh, company, and doing business at Galaxy Market there, fourteen oh nine Gloucester, street corner of Gloucester and Henokake, that's for retail sales of beer and wine, owner is, uh, Ms. Nerali DeVall. Next one is Spox's Pizza, downtown here, the owner is Ms. Ellen Thompson, for beer, wine, and Sunday sales. Next is Discount Liquors, uh, that is at fifteen oh seven Gloucester, that's, uh, Gloucester and Henokake, and the owner is this, A Niche Hotel, beer, wine, and distilled spirits, retail sales of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. Next is Tropical Island, meet Grove Street on Grove Street, the owner is Sunil Patel, and this is for retail sales of beer.
That was approved at our, our...
They had a new application, and, um, because they had a change in ownership, they had a new application, but this is a renewal for next year.
It reads exactly the same, I'm just saying, if you look back at the minutes, and we...
This for another year, they said they have a new owner, so he's applying for twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen?
October third, he has a new application.
Oh, yeah, it was here.
The, uh, next one is Scrap Hall, K-Link, which is located here in downtown, that's for beer, wine, and distilled spirits consumption on premises, and Stacy Bass is the owner. Next is Law for State House, you probably know that, so, um, Altima, his owner is Charles Sulla, and that is for beer, wine, distilled spirits for Sunday sales. And finally, we have the Red Carpet, sure you know where that is, downtown, Scott Jackmore, including... Now, there are, uh, uh, Mr. Scott Jackmore is the owner, and that's for beer, wine, and distilled spirits, uh, consumption on premises. Background investigation is, each of the none of these would be prohibited from holding an alcohol license in City public, so we would recommend approval of these, um, businesses.
Go, go valations?
I'm sorry?
Go valations since my application.
Uh, no, not, not them and these here, not concerning the alcohol licenses.
Any questions, questions? Uh, Misses, um, you see, uh, Representative Meyer made a post, but he renewed that alcohol beverage license, most of the way, please. It's been off motion that we approve all nine, uh, alcohol beverage license that's presented, uh, make a vote.
Second.
Most accepted for approval, uh, is nine, uh, alcohol beverage license renewed, that's presented, any further discussion? Okay, all favor, which is right now. Thank you, Mayor Paul, for the motion, and motion carries now, thank you. Okay, we're down to, uh, our last item on our agenda, uh, item number ten, you can see the turn item, consider adoption of order two. Ten sixty, both minutes of alcohol orders. Back this for, yes, I, uh, what you have for is a clean, I mean, what I would be the file, uh, alcohol, well, file, um, um, to replace chapter three, or two, or four, this is, uh, I think you had this presented, so, five now, uh, three, uh, deliberations, uh, and mix of revisions, if there are any specific questions I can answer, uh, at this point, if we advertise it, uh, we have the additional comments, and if ready for a vote, file approval of the...
I actually have a question.
Sure.
And it's in light of the email that I think we've all received, um, from the regarding the application that was deferred until November the seventh.
That's right.
So, it brings up that question about giving consideration to distance between other...
Correct.
Establishments that have sale alcohol...
That's correct, never, as I mentioned in the last one, you have to get a pretty comprehensive memo of her review, and also, just good to disseminate to the rest of the commission, that really think detailed what your options are, and you consider licenses, new licenses that are supposed to be not necessarily violation of distance requirements, but that are, that need special consideration, sort of, in the way, uh, and then the, the state, that specific express distance requirements that cannot be...
Sure, yeah.
Sure, and then they also provide that the city can, then regulate on their consumption for, like, away from certain establishments, and of course, the general, uh, allows the city to be more restricted when necessary, uh, if, if some of it's being brought from the household, to the city, brought to some point elected to become more restricted on distance requirements, when, that's what it is, residential properties, churches, and schools. Uh, with this addition, with the new addition of this chapter, the new amendment, also adds in a distance requirement for active licenses, um, businesses. They still require some special consideration in terms of, it's not absolutely are similar to what the state would require. It's something that you would take under advisement, and if you chose to deny, which as well, for the providing the commission, you would just need to put a little more emphasis on it, and provide a statement that says, listen, you know, which is the reason why the city commission was licensed to deny, there are several active licenses within approximately your location, there are residential properties within approximately your location, and a church, to, to, you know, the distance of your location, uh, so long as the reason is set forth, you give to the allocation, the, the commission has the ability to...
Okay, which, which we've done for...
Sure.
Cases where it was...
I believe there's one.
College, I know we have...
Near college, correct.
We have a lot of college, um...
I think I figured out, man, where this guy is, he's where the old Winn-Dixie, it used to be, and...
Right, right, right next to the old infest.
Yeah, and he is very close to Davey's Discount, there.
He's close to, uh, license, not...
Yes.
All that, but he's...
Well, and, and we've also got a good one, the background, if we have, uh...
That would extend the license.
Correct. And, there is no way to put some requirements in there that, uh, that ready to prove the state, uh, you know, a few three hundred yards from... By where we do, you know?
Well, that's just fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifty hundred?
Yes.
That's, that's, fifty, fifty.
And that would pay, and that would, that would, uh, the ability to...
By, 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 uh, that, 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 yeah.
And honestly, you, you maximum, the item, uh, fifteen hundred feet, it sounds a lot, it's actually not that hard in comparison to other, other active licensed businesses, all right. I mean, in the state code, they probably balance it, because in tighter urban locations, you know, a hundred yards is probably, can be prohibited, even in the city, in our area, that's not, you know, pretty, it's not that far.
And what you're looking at there, too, on that part, is you've got that, uh, Sixty Market there, and you've got a game room, continuously there, so...
I think I saw the, I think that's the, yeah, I mean, I think that, I know it's a point that the position of commission, so there is fifteen hundred foot department for active license, uh, businesses.
And, and, and that was to, to, to make sure that, and, and the general, uh, consideration, uh, going forward, and, and how, how we want to govern this community saturation of such, um, uh, the areas of saturation of such, um, and the non-discriminatory, uh, factors that could come into the mindset of, of others. We wanted to make sure that we have good legal grounds and standing, that no one would be under the pretense of any type of discriminatory, uh, practices or anything of such. So, that's why I want to make sure that we get the information right, and, and it says that we are governed with the responsibility of the welfare of this community, so...
Well, that, that was my concern when, when we started looking, is because, you know, I know that in the past, we had granted alcohol beverage licenses to, like, destroy this one right next to Winn-Dixie, on, on seventeen, you know, and then you go back and you look at the Walmart campus now, we granted them there, by the way, I said, when there was pharmacy right there, front of them, and the little club right there, front of them, right across the street, Winn-Dixie, right down from there, with Blue Hall, right down from there, nightclub, right down from there, the hospital, right across the corner was, was another, you know, gas station that had, so, you know, I, I wanted to be sure that, you know, whatever we do, you know, as Commissioner Harris said, we're not discriminating against individuals or individual based upon, you know, distance, because if they come back and say, well, how could this be done? Why would this one be done? What is our request, what do we say, what is our answer?
I think that's why it's, you know, part of this, is the most important thing, is to add that statement, you know, written statement, it's a luxury, kind of, the marshal's office, uh, Deputy Marshal, uh, George, say. And, and read it as a record, you know, as, it's going to be case by case basis, no matter what, but you just read into the record that, listen, this is approximately, uh, in the residential areas, but also active license, which just doesn't need to be an oversaturated market in that particular area. And once that's so long that's on the record, rather than delaying, collecting, uh, denying without explanation, then, then...
Well, we, we know what we're situated to talk from college, so, we're here, because I think we did a lot of that, uh...
And then you got to look, even with college, at that time, we did not have residential, residential units on that campus at the time. But, but when we're looking at specific, and case by case basis, and, and legally, that's why I asked for that information, consideration, and doing an assessment of...
and doing an assessment of, of that, of that community and stuff, you have a community right across the road, right across the street, I mean, literally, directly across the street and stuff, so, when I looked at all that stuff, and I read the, um, the unit code and stuff, and made sure to look, because even when we were talking about it before, we were talking about, there was no requirement for residences and all, and I had to go back and research and look at that stuff. Now, that's why I asked you for the explanation on the grid, um, to make sure that I was mindful of, thought of and understanding, but it does address residences.
It does.
It does address residences.
It always has. You know, and, and part of the problem with the commission, the college, um, the issue at that time, I think difficult in some locations, that there was just a vote to, and, and, and you know, moving forward and based on new ones, it would be that, it's fine with the motion, and a vote to the die, but it would be the function of the...
Yes, that's right. Because if, if you do go through the judicial process, you're going to have that information as supporting documentation, and for future, um, future cases.
Nothing, nothing you have to do with a resume from appeal, to... Also, I would say that, that this commission is charged for making decisions, some decisions are not going to be popular, and, and it's going to be met with opposition, but that's okay. I like the fact that we have, uh, an attitude to, to, uh, enforce this, for this, especially reception, whatever, and also if, uh, we, we feel that, uh, maybe we're almost saturated with licenses and so forth, that we can, uh, with explanation, not, who, who, so give us leeway to, to make a decision, and I think that's a great thing, we should give a better decision, basically, uh, we were elected to the position to do that. So not me, if it's popular, if it's, if it's, uh, they would be better opposition, but we stand at the initiative to make a decision for the welfare of our community.
I think it would be good, yeah, also because, but if, um, as part of their amendments, they can also report, um, this new establishment, how many other establishments are licensed with them, you know, whatever.
And the distance requirement, I'm sure, is... So anyhow, uh, this one is, uh, we appreciate your patience and, and your abilities to clean this up, uh, it makes for a better, uh, understanding of, of how we, uh, for this, for this, uh, some good things came out of it, and some things that, uh, maybe some people might not like, however, it is, uh, a relative representative of this commission and the city, where we want, how we stand for the, our alcohol beverage license. Commissioners, uh, we're here now to make a decision to form this, uh, amendment to form this number ten sixty, based on the chapter three.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance ten sixty, propose amendment to the alcohol ordinance as final draft.
Thank you. And the primary vote is second for this, uh, for amendment to the document, uh, to order this number ten sixty, that's presented, any further discussion? No, I think I need to call a vote, uh, all favor, please raise your hand right now. My, 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 motion carries.
He'll, he'll, he'll get one of theirs over there.
Okay, first, we come to the end of our great conference, uh, agenda for, uh, the three tonight, are there any, any further discussion? Motion to adjourn? Uh, I don't have any.
So, 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 frankly, I'm, I'm definitely choosing that, uh, it's not a record.
I'll third.
We have a hundred motions to send for, for adjournment, uh, no, uh, we have no further discussion, uh, for the discussion, all favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Ball, say aye, pass there.